... there. Totaling $6,043.73. That's mainly for repairs, plumbing, wiring, and electrical. One of those three things on it. Except for one we're gonna find a shop back to help with the weight room, something like this. Child nutrition. PO-15 was $860 to Busman Heat &amp; Air for refrigerator and freezer repairs at Longfellow. And PO-17, $225 to Amazon for barcode scanners to use when serving breakfast and lunch. Come through and they can scan the barcode and go straight into the computer system without all the other. Less chance for any of that. And then in the gift fund, has had one purchase order number 12 for $1,500 to NSC Enit for the payment of the scholarship. There are questions with all the financial stuff. 3.5 approval of extrajudy assignment schedules. Just had four things. John Lo, we hired him to teach English at the middle school. He's going to help us with seventh, eighth grade boys' basketball. $1,000 each, assistant coach there. Randy Parks, assistant middle school cheer coach. Football season's over, so we'll help him with basketball seasons. Half that stuff, $250 for assistant middle school cheer. Mary Tyree, TSA stipend. That was that old Science Club stipend, $450. We rolled it over to TSA when we started all that, made those changes. We'd like to bump that to $50 to $500 to match what you paid the middle school or TSA. Dabbles, dabbles. And then Ryan Wilson, head high school girls' track coach. Last year, we didn't have a girls' track coach officially named. He said he'd do it, we couldn't find him. Tracks is rolled around, we still have him, but he did. So we had him since he was paid for what he was already doing. She was assistant track coach. Hard to write double team that last year. Anyway, that's the four things I have on extrajudy.
Questions?
I have no questions.
All right. Thank you. No, that's part of our...
3.6. This is the 3.6, teacher salary schedule. It's a final teacher salary schedule. It's what we discussed in July. We talked about extending the salary schedule five years, $9,500 a year. Still pay above state minimum, all that stuff. In July, I attached the wrong spreadsheet, so I want to make sure you guys have the right spreadsheet. That's why I put that back on.
Thank you for that.
Activity fund report, 3.7. Got their handfuls in athletics. Athletics account deposit, $14,134. That's mainly from the marketing plan and tier parking. Little bit gay, some of that kind of stuff. Majority of that's marketing plan and tier parking, collecting that stuff. Band had a deposit of $8,940 from their fundraiser. FFA deposited $23,938 for blue and gold sales.
The band shirt is looking nice. Early games. That's sounding nice to me.
Looking sharp. It's probably good to talk about two. In athletics, you know, we deposit $14,000, but there's $12,150 in payments. So it goes in, it comes right back out. Still leaves a balance of almost $31,000 there. Big one, you look at FFA, the deposit $23,000. They haven't wrote the full check to Blue and Gold yet.
That's it.
That'll be a big one. Student council deposited $7,935 from pumpkin t-shirt sales. High school vocal deposited $5,461 from fundraising. They also had a $4,000 donation for the Gold Rush boosters. That's part of that, so $1,400 for fundraising. Middle school vocal had their Cherrydale fundraiser, deposited $14,470. Bug bites deposited $5,186. They had a $5,000 donation for KNS Tire to help with that problem. And the big winner is Lincoln School, deposited $17,399 from their Mathathon fundraiser. Kids doing math, get paid for it.
You make a figure of math yourself?
Of course you do.
I like those kind of fundraisers that do academic things. That's our activity funds.
Right. 2.8 approval of activity fund fundraisers. We don't have any.
I don't have any yet.
3.9 is approval of activity fund inter-account transfers. There are none.
I don't have any.
And 3.10, approval of child nutrition report.
In September, we served $5,214 breakfast. We had $10,161 lunches. We've revenue, $1,211.16 in September. About child nutrition, it's hard to look at one snapshot of revenue and things. Child nutrition because it really just depends on when we collect lunches and pre-date dependent. For the year, we have, for the year, we paid out $23,250 of child nutrition for the various things.
You still have that $150,000 balance in there?
Yes. We have that.
Or care area.
Care area was $261,000. $261,000. No health and care area there. It's just too early in the year, so you collected a whole lot of child nutrition.
That's absolutely normal. It's normal in there. Feeling good. Who's doing that first thing?
Cherry now. I do have a good job, too.
I cannot remember.
That's a good job. That's child nutrition. You are seeing little heart, stomach, stomach, meals. I don't know what that counts this year, too. So I'm sure that's part of it.
The increase in family, is that having a...
Maybe a little bit. Probably depends on who you talk to. I know he says work on some surveys. Parent teacher conference is coming soon, going to get those surveys out at that time. If my kids want to eat, that kind of thing, it adjusts our menus to record.
Has there been a slowdown in the schools?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's over. Which has been very helpful.
I bet.
Sorry, it took me a second to register.
I'm sorry.
No, it definitely has. Definitely made a big impact.
3.11, approval of board policy and procedures. Bunch of them.
Yeah, there's, getting caught up a little bit from policies for law changes, statute, things like that. Let me go through these. If you have any questions, stop me if you thought I'd have one. Policy DABB is a records investigation. This policy gives us the option of allowing a person who's been employed by an local school district for the preceding five years to not be required to complete a background check, produce a copy of the National Criminal History Check completed within those five years, and a letter from their district that they were employed stating that they left the district standing and that the teacher was not the subject of any allegation of inappropriate behavior with the student. It is still our policy to require a background check for all new employees.
Right.
So again, our policy is do a background check for all new employees. This one, it's allowable by law, so it's a purpose change we didn't put in there. But it didn't really have that effect where we're going. FFG, reporting suspected child abuse. It adds, it adds a reason to report child abuse by adding sexual battery of a student between 16 and 20 years old as a reason to report abuse. So there's like 16 reasons. So we have the number 16, sexual battery of a student. It also makes it a felony, or the changes make it a felony for an administrator to knowingly and willfully fail to report. And it requires every school employee to sign an attestation acknowledging their responsibility to report. All the language from that is included in state statute. It's a accreditation requirement. Policy DBCA, Standards of Performance and Conduct of Teachers. Under Principle 1, Commitment to Students, it adds antisemitism as a reason that teachers will not unfairly grant any advantage to any student. It also adds the quote from before, the knowing and willful failure to report suspected child abuse or neglect as a reason for dismissal. So if teachers, with these changes in statute of teachers, if the teachers fail to report, they lose their job. If the administrator fails to report, we can charge a felony. So they put a lot of teeth into that child abuse report. This policy is also required by law. Policy DO, termination of employment for teachers. Again, adds knowing and willful failure to report suspected child abuse or neglect as a reason for dismissal. And this policy is required by accreditation standards. Policy DO-R, teacher termination procedures. Adds that the school district must provide a copy of the recommendation for dismissal of the State Board of Education if the recommendation includes grounds that conform the basis of criminal charges that could result in the denial or eradication of certification for child abuse or neglect, or knowing and willfully failing to report suspected abuse or neglect. Also adds that the school must notify the State Board within 10 days of dismissal or removal. That's an accreditation requirement. DOAC, Support Personnel Suspension, Demotion, Nonrenewal or Termination. Adds that the district must place support personnel on administrative leave when notified of a felony investigation by a law enforcement agency. If the district does not do so and the employee is convicted, the district will receive an accreditation deficiency by the State Department. It also defines antisemitism under the racial discrimination reason for dismissal. And finally, it adds that the district shall not take disciplinary action against support employees for disclosing public information to correct a violation of the Oklahoma constitutional law or a rule pursuant to law, or reporting a violation of the Oklahoma constitutional state or federal law. Again, this one's required by law. It just says we can't retaliate. Hope that says it's gonna last a part. EMDV is our flags policy. To our current policy, it adds that any American flag must be flown in accordance with U.S. Code and defines the flag salute. It defines that the flag salute that is required every day to be the pledge of allegiance specifically. Again, that's required by accreditation standards. FEG, Student Transfers for Children of Active Duty Military Members. It requires the district to allow the transfer of children to full-time active duty military members and defines what that is. This policy must require by law. FE is Student Transfers. This policy we currently have is one that is supposed to be updated regularly. It sets the capacity limits for transfer students. In the past, and with discussion with the policy committee, we set the capacities on our current enrollment numbers, what they've done in the past, too. So these limits are pre-k and change at 60, kindergarten 75, first 83 students, second grade 81, third 76, fourth 59, fifth 78, sixth 69, seventh 67, eighth 75, ninth 74, 10th 65, 11th 71, 12th 66. I pull those numbers, I think, as of October 1st or something. Obviously, aren't going to change the date. Anyway, that policy is required by law. EHBB, Title 1 Parent Involvement. Changes here add, I think Ms. Hill met with the committee, right? Adds that the policy shall be uploaded to the district website and that notices will be sent to parents via the school notification app and posted on school social media accounts advising parents and interested persons of Title 1 means. Big changes there. EIA-R4 is our student retention regulation. It eliminates all of the National Constitution Act language, maintains that students maintain a 60% grade average or higher to be promoted to the next grade. That policy went from like five pages to one.
You think it's gonna go back?
I think it'll change, if I dare say. I, I don't know. I read a letter from our new parent, State Superintendent, and he's got to be focused on literacy and stuff, so it may be a focus.
It'll have to be a little bit.
Yes. It's some form of piece of... Okay, that's the policies.
Item to compare surplus, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I would personally like to thank the board members that serve on the different committees, whether it be policy or building or wherever they are, because it takes additional time. And as I think anybody can see, it's very important that we stay on top of policies and procedures legally, but I think there's an awful lot of reading and a lot of research that goes into it. So I would like to thank all of the board members that take the time to serve on those positions. So thank you. I would entertain a motion to go back to Consider Agenda 3.1. We went to 3.11. I'd like to make a motion to approve 3.1 through 3.12 as presented. Yes.
Thank you.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you. Administrative report, principals report. The first thing to me.
Okay. As usual, enrollment is up there. We have pre-k with 60, kindergarten 74, and first grade 84. We are officially joining a new club at Washington. It's the Athon Club. And we have a Read-Athon now. It's like the Math-Athon and the Spell-Athon, so we're challenging students to read, if they can, or with an adult, 100 books through the month of October. So we started that this last week, and it's been really fun so far. The kids, you know, trying to explain to them, they think it's really exciting. So hopefully, at the end of the month, it's just as exciting. Yes, yes. We have conferences coming up like everybody else. Pumpkin Patch visits are coming up. The book fair is underway. That was delivered today. That starts on Wednesday. Of course, we have fall break. And for the last like six months, probably, you've heard me talk about the outdoor classroom and thank you Alba State Bank and on and on. We finally have everything delivered, everything installed, everything being used. So I have a little thank you video for Alba State Bank, but I thought you guys might like to see it, too.
What's that like?
So hopefully, I shared it correctly and you can show it.
Oh, it's looking...
Permission to see it, it's a push request access.
So in the silence here, I will throw out, I've had a couple students, of her students, who come over to my building every day after school. So they come up and ask me if I would pay. Yes, it's hilarious to see a kindergartner come in and they're trying to explain to me that I can either give a donation or I can pay so much per book, you know?
You've done a pretty good job.
Yeah, it's fun.
Do they present? Usually in the top right-hand corner, it says present. Maybe that little bubble, word bubble. Well, where the heck is present? Oh, there you go. Nice, nice, nice. Good job, students here. Okay, you're gonna have to flick through if you can. Yeah. I did have to like pause it. So that is my next corner. We already had that, but we've got a little Facebook.
I'm making ice cream.
You're making ice cream?
Yes.
Oh, wonder how you make that pie?
Very nice.
So, yeah, obviously, they can play with everything during recess or anytime they're outside, but some teachers have found some great spots in the day when nobody's out there. And we have three recesses per grade a day, so it's not often that there's nobody out there, but those teachers like found a little slot, and it's very cool. But I also brought this pumpkin to show you.
Did you go there?
We did, and I have to tell you the story on it because it's kind of impressive. So last year, Jackson Pumpkin Acres donated the rest of their pumpkins to us at the end of the season that they didn't want to sell anymore. And Mrs. Carruthers, Mrs. Ward, like sold them on the corner by buses like for a couple weeks. And I think we made like $700 off of that, like by donation. But we also had a lot of rotten pumpkins at the end of that, and so our custodian, Mr. TJ, planted them back there on the west side of the building, which was really exciting. And they were starting to come up this spring, and oh, can't wait, we're gonna have pumpkins. And then we got new mowing service, and they mowed right over them. And we're like, no, the pumpkins! But we put a little, got a little fence up, you know, to like block off a little bloom, a little sprout. And then they got sprayed by the weed killer. And then we had to put up a little sign, please do not kill these. And we certainly had one sprout come up, one.
But it was a strong one.
And it was a strong one. And now we have, I think, eight pumpkins, seven still on it. And this is one that got picked a little early. So the others are like actually huge, but it has been really exciting for our students. They are so into growing pumpkins. But one of the things we bought was the planters. And so we bought a bunch of like zinnia seeds and different, we always do like a butterfly unit at the end of the year where they like hatch the legs from caterpillars and stuff. But Mrs. Ferris, the librarian, is going to help them plant some plants and flowers that would attract the butterflies and stuff. So that, we have a lot of plans for everything, but just, yeah, thought we would brag about that a little bit, but also huge thank you to Alba State Bank. Okay, and we did some professional development. I mentioned this last month, but we went to the Oklahoma Autism Center, and that was a really meaningful and relevant training, and we definitely plan on going back. I know they've been involved with our district before, but it was a great training. Mrs. Tucker and Ms. Webster and I took some teachers last week to the final day of uplifting classrooms, which was really fun at K-20. And then my grant team from last year's OETT grant were asked to present an early childhood presentation at the Innovative Learning Institute. And Mrs. Ledbetter, who was a pre-k teacher, is like the team leader of this, and she's creating the presentation. She's gathering all the stuff up to bring, and we're just kind of like the backup singers for her. But she is going to present, and we, this girl, really honored that we were asked to do a presentation at a breakout session during that training.
Someone will be training me?
It is November 20th. Yeah, in November. So, that is Washington.
Thank you.
Once again, I have to come behind that. I have to move.
We can reverse this. We'll start, we'll start.
Someday, I will dance. Honestly, I'll.
Oh, yeah.
With Miss Klein's help.
Open this.
So our enrollment at Longfellow, 81 students in second grade, 76 in third grade, total 157. We had a couple move in, a couple move out, but I think we're up one from last month. We had our grandparents' day, our annual, get to celebrate our grandparents at Longfellow. That was on September 5th. And of course, we were supposed to go outside and have recess with our grandparents, and it rained. And so I was not planning on rain plans, so my amazing staff just pivot very quick, and we quickly changed everything we were doing that morning. And we went to the classrooms, and teachers quickly got books out for grandparents to read with their grandchildren, and we served cookies and a drink inside instead of outside. But I think we all had a great time, even though that wasn't how we planned it for the day. It worked out really well. And who knows, maybe we'll read books next time to sit at Playgrounds. I think everyone enjoyed it. We also had our annual Alfalfa Electric Cooperative Electricity Safety Program. The AEC comes in every year and does a neat presentation with our second and third grade students about how electricity works, how to stay safe with it. Should've got, they do a demonstration with a hot dog, and you know, they fry the hot dog, and it catches all the kids' attentions. But just what how, what you need to do if you're around a downed power line, or just safety of electricity just in your home. They do a really great job, and I think her kids always enjoy that program. And then we celebrated International Dot Day. Mrs. Williams, our library and media specialist, I don't know her exact title, she does library programs with our students and our makerspace program with our students. And this is the second year we recognize National Dot Day. It is a day, it's off of Peter H. Reynolds' book, The Dot, and it celebrates creativity, courage, and collaboration. So she reads the book to the students, and then they all get to create their own dot along with any staff member. And we have this long hall down to the gym that's always drab, and we, as you can see, she does a great job, and it just really brightens up that space, and every kid enjoys showing their dot. I'm having our manor's table in the hall this year because there's no other place, and so we have it right across the hall. And I've had two manor's tables already, and the kids are always excited to get up and show me which dot is theirs. So it's real fun. Your kids enjoy it, and it brightens the hall. We also had our Friday finale where we recognized our character award students for positivity. Ms. Sandra, Ms. Schwettger, she presented positivity throughout the month of September, how our thoughts, words, and actions can make a difference. And our winners, our picture there, and I have their names. Second grade was Tegan Cantrell, Ezra Morgan, Autumn Fletcher, Evan Keller, Camilla Bravo, Gage Lott, and Ruby Stacy. And our third grade winners who displayed positivity, Leo Jordan, Colton Dell, Marco Evans, Noel Sherrill, Leo Gordon, Adelina Brown, Sawyer Woodruff. Just a fun way to recognize our kids who are doing good things, having, showing good positive behavior throughout our building. We reckon that we have a different character every month, and we recognize different students who were displaying that character throughout the month. And then we have, you can see, upcoming activities. We got a lot of them, and I even realized I forgot to put Red River Week. That's always a big one that happens at the end of the month, too. No pumpkin. Oh, happy.
Well, could we get one with this song together?
Okay.
Fifty Kilometers.
All right. We are at 137 with 59 fourth graders, 78 fifth graders. And despite our one less class that we have this year, we came in with almost $1,000 more in our math result. So that was really exciting. It was a success. So just thank you to our parents and community for helping out with that. Our top earners get to go to Gambino's for a lunch date with Mrs. Pennell and myself and then they also get a $50 gift card to Walmart. And as our top winners was Stella Barnes, Rowan Pennell, S.J. Tomlin, Kason Maloney, Lennon Dawson, Waterdough. And each of them brought in over $400. Everyone gets a prize, no matter if they bring in a dollar or a thousand. So, but everyone who did earn $100, who earned $100 or more got to do the, pi the teacher in the face. And of course, they love that. Poor Coach Johnson. The kids just think, you know, we're gonna get the PE teacher because he makes us run. I'm like, what do you think this is going to do? So, yeah. So he, he told them prior to that, you better be prepared. But it was all good fun. The kids really enjoyed it. You can see by Avery's face there, she really, really enjoyed that. It was quite, quite a line for him. So that was great fun. Yeah, 31 pies. And then one of the kids didn't hear their names. So after he got all cleaned up, I had a student come up to me and said, I'm gonna get to pile my first pie. Come on, Coach Johnson. He was a spork after he got cleaned up and did another pie in the face. And Mr. Gold's got one tomorrow because there was a student gone. So that was really, I mean, really a big deal. We're gonna do lots of fun things. We're gonna take them to Rialto, they earned certain money, watch a movie. And just try to find different ways to, to use that money for our kids. With our fun, our field trip that we're going to be taking this year, we're going to go to the Oklahoma City Thunder Blue Team, so we'll pay for everybody to get to do that. And maybe even a snack, because I think we just have a great supply of money, so we want to give it back to those kids. Upcoming events, it's already been all, all of those have already been talked about. We do have our Pride of Sibley and AR Party that will be held on October 15th to celebrate our AR point earners. So, oh, and we have fourth grade Halloween concert on October 30th and it is at 2 o'clock. So it'll be interesting, we've never, we've never had a Halloween concert before, so that'll be fun.
So athletics, middle school softball, we finished the season with a 23-0 record. Very impressive by Coach Sheffron and those girls. High school softball, they concluded their season this past week, weekend at Regionals in Jones. They finished with a 23-11 record. Middle school cross country, they've got one meet left on October 16th. That's the junior high all-state meet that Coach K takes them to every year. High school cross country, the high school cross country team will conclude its regular season this Thursday, October 9th at Heritage Hall. And then Regionals is scheduled for October 18th and State is scheduled for October 25th. And those locations will be announced when they get closer. Middle school football, there's one game left and that is next Tuesday in Craft, Kansas. And then high school football, we're halfway through the season there. We have two home games left, this Friday versus Stroud. That is the youth football night and the Call of Honor. And then October 31st versus Meeker, which will be senior night. We are on the road, October 16th at Luther, October 24th at Kellyville. And New Kirk will be November 6th, which is a Thursday. They are redoing their stadium and all of their home games are actually at Pumpkin City and they have to play them on Thursday nights. So we'll wrap the season up there. Middle school and high school basketball, all of those teams began practice October 1st. Middle school will open up at Blackwell on November 4th. And the high school will open up versus Fairview at home on December 1st.
Okay, middle school, we are up one student. You can see the numbers, seventh grade, we did gain one student. Mrs. Hader's students had a blast creating their own tone superheroes. Each student was given a unique tone word and challenged and designed a superhero whose powers, setting, symbol, weapon, arch nemesis, and great accomplishments reflected that tone. And after writing about their character, they brought their ideas to life through these colorful illustrations. And this creative activity helps students deepen their understanding of tone by turning abstract words into exciting stories and visuals. And I, I brought a couple that I could just kind of show you. I thought this one was pretty neat. And they went in and they, uncertain Adella is a superhero in training. Her superpower is masking of the great. This is where she walks into the room, she can tell when someone is nervous, she can go over to the person and give them a hug and all their jitters will be gone. So they wrote these, you know, big stories about this. Some of them are pretty neat and.
What, how do you, what does tone mean? I don't understand.
It's like the tone of the story. Like, hmm, it's like the feeling that is reflected in the story. And they, so they have like uncertain this person, this one is Happy Daisy, Careless Katie. Yeah. So I'll let you guys look at those a little bit. I know, this one, I mean.
Look at that, that's pretty neat.
Yeah, so art has a lot, art has a lot coming forward, so we're really excited about this. Yeah, so some of those are pretty neat. Yeah. Anyway, so that was Mrs. Hader's class. And then if you look up, I gotta take those back because she said she had a grader in the episode. I just stole them and we were pretty proud of them. I know, exactly. Exactly. And if you'll scroll on down, Ms. Kirkpatrick's eighth grade worked on the Road to Revolution project. And, you know, eighth graders are so creative at times when they come up with some of their things. Scroll, scroll on down a little bit, I zoomed in on some of the, they, they have these huge things up against the wall, but I mean, they're creative. You know, it's pretty amazing, so. Yeah, so made of Tom and Jerry. Can you read that? I can't see it from here, but I thought it was kind of funny.
The colonies after the Boston Tea Party? Is that what it says?
Yeah, so I thought, you know, then you have the chips, you know, compared to fries and, you know, they're pretty creative, so. Yep, I thought those were pretty neat. Oh, scroll on down. Why can't the British pronounce their Ts? Because we ducked it all, you know? Just creative. Yeah. Also, we had our duck race this weekend. The weather was perfect. It, I think it went off without a hitch. There were almost 300 ducks sold. So we had our winners, first place was Emma Franz, second place, John Weidner, third, Tisha Stewart. And then the last duck had to have a little bit of, you know, coercion to cross the line and that went to Shanae Felton. So all of those people will receive a prize. And they can come by and pick it up at the middle school.
And you save the ducks?
No, you see the picture, they're just little bitty plastic ducks.
You save the ducks to, you're gonna do it again?
Yes, this is gonna be a yearly thing. I would like to come up with some kind of a-thon because they made a lot of money doing their a-thons. But I'm not sure what middle schoolers would want to a-thon. We didn't quite make as much money as you guys did in your a-thons.
They wore them out before the year.
Yeah. That's, that's probably true.
That's, that was fun.
Enrolling at the high school freshman, we have 74, sophomore 66, junior 69, and senior 66. It's about 11 less than last month, but that is sorting out, you know, who didn't return but was still on our rolls and where did they go? And it takes a hot minute for Mrs. Smithy to find some kids sometimes because they don't necessarily go ahead and enroll. So it has settled in, I think, and we are at 274, which is a really good number. This weekend, One Act went down to Mustang, to the Mustang Festival. I'm pretty excited to say I got to see the debut of Shadows in the Light. Talking with Mr. Broth this morning, Shadows in the Light is a production that he had commissioned for this cast of kids. And I cannot tell you how perfectly it fits them, how, it is a powerful story and it fits their acting abilities and it was, it was so great. It was, it was certainly worth the, the trip to Mustang. But they came away with some awards with it. Best set design, best costumes, and three had all-state, three all-state cast members, Madeline Ryerson, Dash Dickey, and Aiden Brinkley all did a great job. You'll have an opportunity again Saturday, October 11th at 2:45. That is their regional competition. Admission is free and you are gonna want to be there. You're gonna want to see this. It was a great show. So, Western Honor Choir is something that the choir participates in every year. This year, I didn't count the number of middle school and high school students who were chosen, but we have, as you can see, a long list of kids who were selected. Isaac Antone, Dash Dickey, Avery Goss, Ben Cre, Merrick Mance, Case Martin, Ken Lee Murrow, Madison Ryerson, Russell Smiley, Jocelyn Broth, Madison Kern, Selena O'Hugh, Lila Schmidt, Neveah Steffen, and Jackson Wooten were all chosen for this year's choir. Dash Dickey, Avery Goss, and Madeline Ryerson all earned their sixth year, a little typo. I rearranged my sentence there and you can see that I missed part of it, but they've gotten their six-year medal. So that is a huge accomplishment that these students have been chosen six years in a row. That's pretty amazing for them. We have three students that were chosen for their three-year medal, Lila Schmidt, Neveah Steffen, and Selena O'Hugh. Last week was homecoming and I think everyone had the opportunity to participate in some great homecoming celebrations. We did our distinguished gold bug presentations to the students a little differently this year. We did those all in the auditorium, so all of the students got to hear from all of the distinguished gold bugs. And I, I loved having them all in there. The questions from the kids were amazing. You know, why did you choose this career? If you could take one thing away from Alba High School as your, you know, what you learned and what you've used the most or, you know, so many great questions from them that it was, I was glad that every kid got to hear from every one of those distinguished gold bugs. So that was really awesome. Avery Goss was crowned homecoming queen, which, you know, excellent choice. All of them would have been great, but Avery was, was chosen and Sean Hamlet was crowned king. Redery Students of the Month this month are Kylie Adair and Trace Hamilton. And last month, that was Avery Goss and Gabe Harzman. Northwest Tech is hosting an ACT prep course, couple of them this semester and we're hoping that students do take advantage of those. Shelley Harris Workshop on October 15th and the Chad Cargill on December 3rd. And we are super excited that our, our students get to participate in that. Pink Week is this week. Today is Orange Day. It is to recognize, bring awareness to leukemia. Oh, no, yes, leukemia. Oh, man, I totally messed up this report. At Thursday, that's Tuesday. Maybe I should proofread a little better. That would probably be a really good idea. So Tuesday, tomorrow is gold for child and cancers. Wednesday is white for lung cancer. Thursday is purple for all cancers. And then on Friday, of course, for breast cancer is pink. And finally, I know I haven't added, but Mrs. McDermott reminded me, speaking of the livestream prior to the board meeting starting. Chris Eckhart took his livestream team down to the Comets Stadium, met with their livestream team, got some pointers, got some helpful hints, spent a time with actual professionals learning how to do what they do for us. And between that and some additional equipment, I think it's really done, they've done a great job with our livestream team. So excited that they have that opportunity to meet with professionals, to do what they do for us, you know, for, basically for free, so, pretty awesome.
Before we move on, I would like for all of you to know, it is quite a heartwarming opportunity to be at Walmart or the market or anywhere downtown and a grandparent walks up and says, you wanna think about this grandparents' day? Yes, I do. Well, those people are rock stars. Because of the weather, so, just gonna tell you, cheers. Makes my heart happy. You wanna make my heart happy, will you, Mr. Superintendent with your report? Can you, can you top that? It's not, it's not as.
Exciting?
Okay, well, it is important stuff, so, okay.
But do you have a pumpkin?
You got some seed, man.
Do you want to borrow this one?
But thank you for all you do. All right, we will move on to 4.2, superintendent's report.
Let's talk a little about facility. Integrity Construction, here in town gave me a quote on, I got a quote from them on fixing the water drainage over here by the northeast gates of the track. The cement goes down to Flynn off the parking lot. And also the drainage coming off the north side of where Terry Spitz's office is. Dead, dead down there is gonna be a matter of just tying the downstream into the drains that are already there and then cover it all back up. So, pretty small project there. This round here, we're going to, he's, I'm gonna watch. He's, he's gonna pour cement probably another three feet out from that, the water slide that's already there. Run another three feet, angle it so it creates more trough and gets around the corner of that retaining wall that's there. And then you get down street side, we're gonna box in, the cement drive is going at the gate, we're gonna cement that out, cover the fence out to Flynn out. That's where it's all cement, so the water comes off that hill. It comes off the parkway, so it hit that trough, come down, hit cement out on the flint, cross around into the creek. So, all that, that was at $6,600, these two projects, fixing that up, that, the amount of concrete you've got to pour and things like that. Doing a good job for us there, so. Tomorrow morning, I'll call him, get that scheduled, get that going. Little shout to Damian Starks, one of our county commissioners. He fixed the driveway at school farm, coming off a park lane going down. I mean, he didn't wash his house for years, right? They came in, put, looks like a bunch of chip rock in there, packed it in, had a grader, tried to, tried to rework the grade on that road where it's got a little bit more of a ditch on the west side of the driveway so we can channel the water and maybe not cut it out so bad. Without cementing that whole driveway, we have to keep working on. You know, he did that for us. He also came and worked on, brought the grader up, worked on the entrances to the tiers. So, yeah, so good for county commissioners, good for this county. You know, I really appreciate his help with that. Been in contact with ODOT and I say I've been in contact with ODOT, that usually means I drive out to the work site, find the ODOT pickup, just go up to it, talk to them. Having trouble getting anybody on the phone. Anyway, talked to them a couple times or several. We know the highway project's hard to affect, the drive, particularly at the end of the day with parent pickups and, we know we're gonna have to reroute all the things. The last guy I talked to was one of the jobs who pretends he's supposed to be getting, he was gonna get ahold of his boss, I gave him my card, said, have the guy call me, whatever. Trying to get kind of schedule, work schedule. Maybe what affects who you, maybe it's gonna do it next summer. Just try to get some indication. Just get a lot of projects going on, just trying to.
It's gonna affect us.
Yeah, it's gonna affect us. If we have time, that's what I tell everybody, if we have time to plan for it, we can do anything.
Sure.
And we want to help however we can. And all this is good for Alba.
Yeah, it is. Very necessary.
But we need to plan for that as well. So, anyway, working on, working with those guys on the ODOT project. Transporter Transportation, the activity bus has been repaired. It's back from Tulsa, we're waiting on the press, formerly Big Slip Graphics. Had to complete the vinyl work to finish the graphics on that new panel install. She was supposed to be color matching the vinyl. Maybe last Friday, Thursday, Friday. Then I'll have to print the panel, install it, so I would say a lot sooner than later. The Van Hool Activity Bus is at National Bus right now. We took it over, brought the new one back. It's got a little overheating problem and air conditioning. It'll work and then it just shuts off. So I don't know if there's. So I don't know if there's expansion valve or something like that. When it's done, we're gonna take the Sentra over, the third active bus. And it's got a regen issue since new in that dev system. It doesn't wanna, it doesn't wanna, you have to regen it every so often. You're supposed to do it when you're driving down the highway, right? This one, before it regens does it, then you have this kind of thing. So they're supposed to be working, it's a computer issue. They're gonna, we're taking over, see if they can get it back before we have to take it to Dallas to the Sentra. So, anyway, all that's happening. Talked to Richard, RT Diesel, he's having trouble finding a head for that people mover. He said he can find a new engine. So you can get a whole engine for a short block, but you can't get this head, is what he was saying. So, I told him, go and price, I mean, it's been a year, three or four months. Tell him to price a new engine, please, see what's gonna cost to fix the thing. So we can make a good decision on that. And whether we need to just outright replace the bus or we can do it. So anyway, that's what that's, all the round buses are running good, the new ones we bought last year. This year, I'd like to look and replace a couple of the older Suburbans. We've got a couple Suburbans that are generations old at this point, as in, four generations. And a lot of miles on them. So I'd like to replace a couple of the old Suburbans, maybe have a new people mover and maybe possible add trucks. Kind of what we're looking at down the short stretch here. So, through transportation.
Okay, 4.3, resignations, return, res- reassigned.
The only resignation I've got is Samantha Holly. She was custodian at Washington. She picked up more hours, more hours at her other job and paid a little better, whatever. So she's gonna get more full-time now.
Any questions on item four? Follow item four. If there are none, move on to items of current business. 5.1, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the Alba School District budget for school year 26.
I'll try with the copy of the budget I put together. I'm gonna go through the whole thing, just kinda kind of hit the highlights. This will be posted on the school's website after tonight, so it's like it was last year. First, first page is message for me, second page is, it's kind of that makeup of our district, five board members, essential office staff. Always like to, I think I was really unique in the fact that you look at our scope and Three elementary schools, middle school, high school, Career Technology Center, and Indian University. There's not a lot of, not a lot of schools to talk about that kind of educational opportunities. It's pretty neat, pretty unique down there. Look over the page, administrative projections. And yeah, I might kinda go through this. If you guys have any questions, stop me. Of all the things that make up, you know, we look at the budget, try to project, it exactly is, it's a projection. On what we think we're gonna make, what we think things are gonna cost, that kind of thing. It's just like a, it's a budget. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, our economy is continuing to see an increase in costs, costs of goods and services. Current inflation rate is about 2.3%. Troy, on the Bureau of Labor Statistics website, they have a CPI, Exerted Price Index Calculator. And that calculator from US government, $1,000 in August of 2020 would cost $1,046 today. So when you talk about 10 million, 12 million dollar budget, move that decimal point about three places, you see it's costing hundreds of thousands more to do the same things that we did in 2020. Revenue to begin each new fiscal year continues to decline due to a decrease in trend in gross production taxes. It's kind of a historical trend. We've seen just a little, I don't even wanna say uptick, or maybe a flattening up. Time will tell. My fingers are crossed that maybe we've stopped the drop on gross production. Anyway, historically, we did, we have seen a decrease in gross production taxes. We also are seeing a declining trend in total population and the revaluation of property. It's a very, very common thing in Northwest Oklahoma in particular. Weighted student counts, intended student counts historically remain relatively steady. Last five years have slight fluctuations every year. We have seen a little bit of decline this year. District net assess valuation has decreased from a high in 2017 of 157.7 million to the present valuation of 132.9 million. That's about a 15% drop, 15.7% decrease since 2017, which is why all of our abhorrent taxes are based on. So, drops in theory, our abhorrent was around that same percentage. Last year, the district valuation was 135.8 million, or 132.9 this year. So that's a, again, from last year to this year, we see a 2.13% decrease, which our inflation rate's 2.3%. So, there's a correlation between, between the two. While we have an increase of real property evaluations, we saw decreases in personal property and public services. Real property being equipment, that kind of thing. The district did overcollect estimates in the general fund last year by 1.268 million. This was primarily, primarily due to an overcollection of $806,000 in abhorrent taxes. They settled a couple of tax protests last year, the big one being the Target protest. And that gave us around 4,000 current year and 417,000 prior year in collections. So the 1.2 million over collections, those tax protests accounted for 800,000. I don't know if I wanna say this out loud, but currently, we don't have any tax protests on the books. So, maybe we're starting to come out with some of that. We also overcollected 102,000 in earnings and investments. That, here, where our policy was written, choose to deposit all of the interest amounts from our investments back into the general fund. And we put the policy in to separate that out. You know, if somebody donated some money and it goes into an investment account, the interest amount is gonna go back to that same money. There's accounting principles, I guess, or anything. So we'll see a little bit of drop in that possibly this year, but, you know, we did overcollect in that, so investments are doing good. But between the two, the abhorrent and the interest, that was 932,000 and 1.2 million that we overcollected. So, that's all one-time money that we, that we won't get every year. That's what I'm trying to say there. Current year's allocation for foundation salary incentive from the state is 1.761 million compared to last year's final allocation of 1.763 million. It's a decrease of .13, it's a decrease of $2,300, so $2,396 for the state aid the district received in 2025. It's also a decrease from where the school year ended to versus today. So it's like in May of '25, October. So, once they're done all their adjustments, all your law, the mid-year, it's hard to say what that's gonna be exactly. And we're pretty close. Initial estimates show an anticipated general fund revenue equivalent state aid to be 10 million, 915,000 dollars. That does not include last year's fund balance of 6.8 million. That's an anticipated 5.14% decrease in general fund collections. Remember, these, these are all the estimates and they're based on general rule of estimating 90% of last year's collections. So we take 90% of what we collected last year, is how our auditor gets these numbers. We typically see, we like to see a decrease of about 5%. So, we still have a 5% to play with there. So we, we can anticipate collecting more than what we initially estimate. The SMD is a very conservative estimation of what we should, what we should collect. That said, for the '25-'26 school year, the actual working budget amount of 12,137,000 is below the SMD to now of 78,000, which is allowed by our auditor. The auditor does include prior year fund balances projections, so... State aid, covered my face. State aid is allocated on the basis of weighted students using average daily membership, special child count category, teacher experience, and degree index. The weighted, the weighted ADM is used to calculate the state aid for this year, is taken from a higher than the previous two years or our October 1 count. So right now, we don't have an October 1 count, it's been certified since, implies the previous two years. The '24-'25 school year had a weighted ADM at 1962.43. That's what our current state aid is based on, it was the higher than the previous two years. State aid will be recapped by you in January. I anticipate that weighted ADM number stays the same in January. I don't think it'll change, looking at our current, all the things like that. General fund estimates, again, first expenses for the year is 12,137,363. This estimate's been increased as a result of payroll increases, salary, the salary, inflationary costs, you know, that, all those things we talked about. District expenditures are higher than previous fiscal year expenditures for the reasons that, well, a lot higher, but there is an increase in cost. As you retain teachers, if we want to retain teachers, want experienced teachers, every year you get a bump on salary spend, so it does multiply up. Positive thing to think about there is when Pat does the SMD, he is using that rule of 90, 90% prior year collections to estimate this year. It's a conservative estimation, and we typically see an overcollection of those, which is what, what comes last year. We had the same conversation a year ago and we actually ended up increasing our carryover when the, when the year was over. So, some of that. Policy CDA states that our fund balance must be maintained at no less than 10% of the district's annual budget. So using this matrix, our minimum carryover to maintain is 1,771,000. Our current carryover is 6,802,000. So, carryover's very healthy right now. Building funds also, good financial standing with the fund balance of 3,560,000. Auditor estimates that Alba Schools will collect 629,461 dollars in abhorrent taxes for the year. Again, it's a rule of 90. Estimated expenditures are increased as funds account for the same thing, mainly inflationary costs. Now, we don't have the half million dollar best purchase this year, so that, that'll help on the building fund. It's also important to be conservative with this fund, as it may pick up more expenses if the general fund carryover decreases too much over the next few years. So we wanna maintain a healthy building fund for those emergencies, for those, those types of things.
Overuse?
Yeah. So, any questions on the financial side of that budget?
Well, I am proud, I think the actual amount percentages of carryover reducing each year is going down. And I'm proud of you guys for doing that and maintaining that. I think it looks like we, it was like 13 years, at the rate we're going, we have excess. So, I mean, that's much better than we were doing for a while.
Last year, we were on track, remember, we were on track to, we've been, like I said, overspending what our actual collections were. It's got no carryover whatsoever. We need to, we need to get it away before the state... We were on track and then they set on target. And then Superintendent Walters sent the school security grant that we're supposed to get regressed with, and sent out 185,000 all at one time. So, those couple things there, we end up with an increase in carryover. And we need to remember, it's one-time money. There's a target settlement, that's school security money, some of that. So, I think we're on track to obtain that. The next couple pages has our enrollment summary, membership summaries, kinda explains some of that. Total net assess valuations, I like to look at this one, the net assess valuation chart.
Do you know that enrollment doesn't scare me like I thought it was going to? That senior class last year was big.
It was.
So that, that could count for '25 and '23, that so, we ran about '25.
We lost in that transition. I mean, we got perhaps somewhere, we can get for you next time. Around 50 kids, 50, 54 kids total, district-wide. Well, I haven't broken down by grade. There's like 21 in that second, fourth, or second, fifth grade age. So, a lot of young kids. I also see a declining population, I also see a declining, young families moving to go to jobs. So we had, we had kinda an outlier there, and like I said, some of those others, you were just talking about the big class graduates. So, it's hard to get to the 50 kids.
Right there at Alba High School, that's, that's a big part of that, is that, just that big class.
Yeah.
We lost a lot in the third, third grade. We were planning on a lot bigger. We lost some double digits in enrollment that we weren't expecting.
And that's rather unusual, isn't it?
Not, very unusual, that lead, yeah.
Just kinda ebb and flow via college, that's probably what... Net assess valuation. Everybody ever wondered, we're not collecting as much. You go back to 2017, you can see that. When you say historical data, we're losing value. Things are depreciating. There's not, there's no new pump stations being put in, no new reading speed got going up, and things like that.
It's kinda got a whack-o there for a while.
Yeah, but it's fine.
Yeah. I think you finally...
You finally got it, yeah, finally, probably. It talks about how we classify expenditure when you see those codes. And then the last handful of pages is the actual budget analysis of what we have in our computer right now. That is, that is the budget.
If they have any questions about 5.1, the discussion with possible board action vote to approve the Alba School District budget request for year 26. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Who'd approve the Alba School District budget for year 526, that's presented.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
5.2, discussion with possible board action vote to approve a resolution to the Oklahoma State Department of Education of Alba School District intent to use hours rather than days for the '25-'26 school calendar.
Prove this resolution officially notifies the State Department that we're calculating hours instead of total days. If you remember back in the day, you had 280 days, they'd say you can have hours. We're, we, our calendar's based on hours. We are required to attend school a minimum of 1,086 hours over a minimum of 166 days, and our calendar does meet those standards.
And they see that. They see it, right.
So, anyway, we need to prove this later so we can file the State Department.
Okay, motion of second?
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
5.3, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the Alba School District gifted educational plan for the '25-'26 school year.
I am going to defer to Ms. Martini.
I'll try not to go as long as Mr. Breschers did, but there's just a lot we might... So, our local advisory committee met on September 10th. We discussed the gifted and talented plan along with the other information. At this time, we decided not to make any changes to our gifted plan, so it is the same as, as was approved last year. We also, I'm just gonna throw out a little blurb real quick. There is a nomination form if, if you would like to nominate a student for gifted and talented. It is found on the website. If you go under parent resources, it has the gifted and talented policy as well as the gifted and talented nomination form, so...
Mrs. Martini, how many children we serve?
Mrs. Martini, how many children we serve?
Uh, I didn't bring that with me, but it's somewhere around 28, I believe, or identified.
In all of our schools?
In the five schools, yes. It's, you know, extremely difficult to be recognized in the, there's two different categories, and in category one, the students need to score in the top 3% on a national ability test, we give the Otis Lennon, and I believe, don't quote me, because I'm not looking at my numbers right now, but I think that in the district, we've had three or four students qualify for that, the number's pretty low, it's, it's a, we've tested a lot of kids, a lot of them don't qualify for that. You know, here's what I think part of the problem could be, and this is just me personally, when I think of a student who could possibly qualify for gifted and talented, it's not always those kids that are making straight A's, that are turning everything in, that are doing all that, these are like the, it's not a typical test that you take, it is 100% out-of-the-box thinking, it's definitely the higher level thinking, some of the kids probably would surprise you, I remember going, and I'm just gonna throw this out, one time I went and gave the test to a second grader, and I said, "I'll never go back down to second grade and do that," just kidding, but, the kid like, I don't know, he just click, 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 he was upside down in his chair, he was all over, and he was one that scored in the 97% top, and so, I just don't think we always think about, you know, nominating those students for that. We do do a good job of going back and looking at, there's multi-criteria, that's the second group, and so we look at test scores based on, like, state test scores, and then, this year we'll be looking, in the past, we've looked at our MAPS data, this year, we'll look more at our iXL data, and try to recognize some more kids that we can try to get in and nominate and test them, but...
I know, 'cause our policies probably remain level for several, I always go through to see if there's anything we're at, because I know you can change, so I, I would say we would need to look at trying to get those numbers up, and the only way we're gonna get numbers up is to, is to identify more children by testing or whatever, it may take more resources, too, but, I think we need some work on that.
Anything else? That's all. Okay. Any questions to the voting? We'll get on Mr. Breschers, that'll be our turn of motion, please.
Take a motion, we approve the gifted and talented education plan, 5.3, for this fiscal year.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
5.4, discussion with public board action vote to approve an out-of-state travel request from Alva High School show choir to travel to Winter Park, Colorado on March 19th through 22nd, 2026 for a show choir competition.
High school show choir is requesting a travel to Winter Park, Colorado, 19th and 27th March, that's the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and spring break.
It is that week of spring break?
It's on Thursday, so it's spring break week, for a show choir competition, it's like their annual trip, like we went to Branson last year, went to Winter Park a couple years ago, anyway, they, they take Suburbans to train, I'd recommend to approve that, that championship.
To approve item 5.4 is presented.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Any new business? Item 7 is propose executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation of the superintendent for 25 Oklahoma Statute Section 307B1, we need a vote to convene to go into executive session, please.
Some moves.
Second.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.